These?
These look the same.
I got them.
We'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for August 1st, 2017, at 4:30 PM. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second. We've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. At this time, we'll jump down to item five, I think it's B and C. Okay, we'll get one more here. Item 5B, consider resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of fixed the form and details from $5,560,000 general obligation utility revenue bonds, Series 2017A, and $2,995,000 general obligation permanent improvement revolving fund bond, Series 2017B. Go ahead.
Thank you, John Burmeister with PFM. I'm going to talk about the agenda item B and then C because it's kind of all kind of intermixed. But we did visit with Moody's Investor Service. We spent about an hour on the phone, and we talked about the city's credit rating as well as the PUC. And pleased to confirm that they did confirm your AA2 rating. And if, for those of you, there's AAA which is the best, AA1 and AA2. So you're two notches away from the highest rating that you can achieve. And that's been a strong rating that you've had for many years. They factor in your fund balance, your economic development activity here in the community. They also then factor in your size. And given the size of your community is relatively small, you're pretty much rated as high as you can go, given the size of the community. So you should be really proud of the AA2 rating because you're one of the smaller entities on that bracket because a lot of those folks have $5 billion worth of valuation in the community relative to yours. So you've achieved a very high rating. The PUC was looking really strong as well. They have six months cash reserve balances. They have five times coverage on their debt. So they've been able to maintain that really well. And in fact, the B series is now being implemented, and they have some existing bonds paying off. So even after the issuance of the B series, their overall debt payments are going to drop or decline in the future. So they planned this really well in terms of the bond issue. But we did solicit proposals on the Series A and the Series B. So alongside your packet somewhere, you should have two, what we call, results of sale. I'll go through the Series 2007A first. You can see this is several pages long. FTN Financial Capital Markets, they came in with the bid. And you see the little, over the right-hand corner, TIR. That's called a true interest rate, similar to the APR on a car loan. We call it true interest rate in our industry. So you can see they bid a 2.5461%. And then if you want to flip the page, you can see Robert W. Baird, they came at a 2.58. So pretty close to the FTN's bid. Wells Fargo came at a 2.588, so really close to Robert W. Baird. Northland Securities out of Minneapolis, Cantor out of Memphis. And then last but not least is the Stiefel Nicholas at a 2.71%. So we were very pleased with those bids. You can see the different diversity where these underwriters are coming from. They're coming from all over the United States, Memphis, Milwaukee, Charlotte, North Carolina, Minneapolis, and Birmingham, Alabama, of all places. So you're attracting a lot of underwriters from all over the United States on these bids. And so when you get to that, I would just recommend that you award this to FTN Financial Capital Markets at a true interest rate of 2.5461%. And then the other thing you may notice on this front page, you can see the rate. That's the coupon that you'll be paying the investor for holding that bond. And do you all see the yield right next to that? That's what the ultimate borrowing cost of that maturity is to the city. So today investors are looking for higher income because interest rates are so low. They're actually willing to pay you more money than they'll get back at maturity to receive a higher interest rate. So they're paying you, you're going to pay them a 3%, and they're going to pay you 102% to get back to 100%. It's just because investors are seeking income, and they're willing to pay you more than what they'll get back at maturity to receive all that extra income. And we're seeing that quite common through all of the bidding. And then the other thing is the Federal Reserve Board is increasing interest rates, and people think they'll continue to increase interest rates. So in the event that they keep raising interest rates, they lock in this yield, and the price of this bond will decline slower. And so it protects the investor that way, because they have a higher coupon, and it protects their position. So that's why they're accepting that. You can see here the second results of sale. That's the Series 2017B bonds. This is the city's issuance. This is your permanent improvement revolving fund bonds. You can see here Robert W. Baird with a whole army of underwriters from pretty much all over the United States. Montclair, New Jersey's an interesting one, Los Angeles, California, New York, New York, Richmond, Virginia. They bid at 1.77%, 1.7753%. Northland Securities out of Minneapolis at a 182. And then the last is Stiefel at a 1.9%. These results are quite a bit lower than what we had thought, because when we designed this four or five months ago, we thought rates would continue to head higher. In fact, the short-term yield curve has gone up, but the long-term has actually come down a little bit. So rates are actually, the longer you borrow on the yield curve, actually flattened out. So that's why these results are so good. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you have based on these results. And we would recommend to award this to Robert W. Baird at a 177 for the Series 2017B bonds.
Anybody have any questions, John? Seeing none, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, entertain a motion for...
I think that's a resolution, right?
What's the resolution, sorry?
I'll offer the resolution issuing, offer resolution waive the reading, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, and fixing the form and details for the $5,560,000 general obligation utility bonds, Series 217A, and $2,995,000 general obligation permanent improving revolving fund bond, Series 217B, and authorize the mayor and finance director to execute the bond documents on behalf of the city in New Ulm to finance the 2017 CIP improvement projects and the 2017 PUC wastewater, North 20th, North Street improvements. Long resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second, offer resolution waive reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, also entertain a motion for item 5C.
I'll offer the resolution. Or, I'm sorry, this is a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none? Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. All right, we'll go back to our regular order of business and start out with... Get up there. Item 2A, consider a motion approving the issuance of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce. And that's for October 7th and October 14th.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Item 2B, consider a motion approving the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the Church of St. Mary's to conduct bingo raffles and pull tams and tip board gambling at the Church of St. Mary's.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, that's for Sunday, September 24th, 2017. Any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Item 2C, consider a motion approving the issuance of a temporary on-sale 3.2% malt liquor license for Church of St. Mary's.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Item 3A, number one, consider resolution approving with conditions to request from Mary Ann Grunmeyer for a simple lot division of the property located at 810-8 North Street.
Counselor Mack had to leave for an emergency. Do we want our community development guy back there?
Dave.
Dave?
Dave is back there. He's always back there.
Dave Schnobruck, Community Development Director. We had six different items at our last planning commission meeting. This particular request is associated with a item that was undertaken by the Board of Zoning Adjustment where some variances were granted to facilitate this particular matter. This is a corner lot, zoned R2. We have two structures on the lot. And unfortunately, there was a construction project that took place that was too close to the property line. And in order to address that situation, the owner on the rear parcel elected to sell five feet to the owner on the front parcel. And in order to do so, they have to get a simple lot division for that purpose. I might note that the Board of Zoning Adjustment recommended approval of the variance.
Thank you, Dave. With that being said, I'll offer resolution waive the reading approving with conditions the request of Mary Ann Grunmeyer for a simple lot division of the property located at 810-8 North.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer resolution waive reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, number two, consider motion approving with conditions the preliminary plot of Milford Heights, second addition, located in part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, first addition.
Okay, the applicant for this particular item is Al Paylor on behalf of S&amp;P Development, LLC. The current legal description of the property is part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, first addition. A total of 33 lots would be created by the subdivision in addition to Streets Alley and an Outlet A. Outlet A would be property that would be dedicated to Fender Park and consists of .3 acres. The lots 1, 2, and 3, those particular lots would require variances. The lots for Block 4 do not require any variances. There are a number of conditions attached with the preliminary plat approval, and those are identified in the report from the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paylor is here, if you want to have...
What, you have anything you want to add, Al?
If there's questions.
Okay. Step up to the mic, name and address for the record, please.
My name's Tom Romain. I live at 644 Fender Drive. And my concern on this plat, as well as the rezoning issues that are in item 4, 5, and 6, and the motion authorizing the New Ulm EDA to sell 20-plus acres are all kind of nested together. And my request is that before you act on item, on this particular item, the rezoning items, the density change item in the comprehensive plan, that you consider the motion authorizing the EDA sale, because I have some serious questions about the conduct of the sale to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm the homeowner at 621 Fender. So if I could address a few concerns that we have regarding the rezoning of this at this time?
Go ahead.
All right. Obviously, the homes in this area have not been sold quite the way the EDA would like. The homes and the lots have not been selling. As someone who moved to this area two years ago, I had looked into buying one of the homes in that area. Eventually, I was able to get a home, but it wasn't one directly for sale from them. Speaking to a lot of people that I happen to notice, know since I teach at the college, I've known many people that have considered these homes and some of the reasons they haven't sold. Affordable, they were designed for affordable housing. However, as someone who barely qualifies under the requirements there, if you could meet the requirements for affordable housing, it was difficult to actually afford the homes. Many people that looked at these homes, I can cite at least six, who felt that the layouts that were chosen were not very conducive for families. The layouts were not good for dining rooms and things like that. Having looked through the layouts and considering building at that time, there were better layouts that were available, but these were not put on the market. And then, as far as people purchasing other lots, some concerns they have is the pages and pages of conditions that we would have to live under in that area in order to have a home. Paint colors, locations of the garages, the types of windows put in, all of those are probably concerns that also slowed the sale of lots. So we purchased homes there in good faith. Now, suddenly, these conditions are being changed. Like I said, the very first of these townhouses would go up directly in my backyard. We were told at the planning meeting that there would be great demand for these. Looking at homes on the market right now, admittedly, this is the off-season somewhat. Homes in the $100,000 to $150,000 range have averaged 32 days on-market in New Ulm. Homes in the $150,000 to $200,000 range have been on the market for an average of 66 days. Homes in the price range that are being targeted here, over 200,000, have been on the market for an average of over 200 days right now. And yet, we're being told that somehow, putting more of these more expensive homes on the market is somehow going to trickle down and provide more housing for those who are in the lower-middle class. I'm a history teacher. That logic just would not fly for me in any paper that a student would provide. So what is probably going to happen here? We're going to change this. We're going to put up these townhouses. Obviously, there'll be a few that sell immediately because there'll be a limited demand. And then I'm afraid in a couple of years, much of this is going to be sitting empty. We've been told that none of this can change to some other type of housing then without EDA approval. We've seen here that the EDA can obviously change this in a matter of days if they so desire. So we bought homes here in good faith. I'm afraid I'm going to see my property taxes go up because now this is directly in my backyard. You can say, oh, there's $220,000 properties here, raise my property tax, and I'm kind of left here in this area. So I have no real hope that this is going to be blocked. I guess I'm just basically here to see if anyone is going to at least address the concerns of homeowners here. Basically, everybody in that neighborhood signed a petition opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Mike Schwartz, 900 Summit Avenue, New Ulm, Minnesota. Don't really have any prepared comments. And just a disclaimer to begin with, I'm on the New Ulm Economic Development Authority Board for approximately two years now, and I also work at the F and M, excuse me, France and Bank and Trust here in New Ulm. And so my comments are not in that regard, but as far as a citizen in this community. Just a few quick comments. In my opinion, the EDA's Milford Heights addition or development is not performing well, and something different basically needs to happen. New Ulm as a community needs to address the current housing shortage and related buildable lots. And finally, last comment basically is, I firmly believe the sale, rezoning, replating this property is in the best interest for the city of New Ulm. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Good afternoon. I'm Daniel Brahm. I live at 1014 Upper Wallahay Lane in New Ulm. I serve, I guess, in multiple capacities. I guess one issue I would like to bring up at this time is, I was an EDA member back in 2007 when Milford Heights was first undertaken. And I think it's important to understand a couple of points regarding Milford Heights and what its original inception was about. When this project was undertaken, it was for the purpose of affordable housing. And at the time, the city of New Ulm and the EDA engaged the help of a couple of agencies to facilitate and bring forward this project, one being the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund, and second being the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. At the time, on the EDA Board, the concept that we see in Milford Heights 1, and subsequently the covenants that were undertaken, really were at the requirement of the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund. And they were pushing this concept of building better neighborhoods. And they, along with the Southwest Housing Partnership, were going to be involved with building a lot of the affordable homes in that area. So the burden of the homes and the construction of new homes and the whole concept was not going to be strictly on the shoulders of the EDA at the time. Well, the Great Recession hit, Greater Minnesota Housing Fund and the Southwest Partnership kind of turned and ran out of town, and we've yet to really see them participate like they originally had asked for. I remember being on the board and going through the design concepts that they were proposing for the homes up there. And we were really a little bit hesitant to move forward with it, only because we wanted to see if this sort of thing would take hold in the city of New Ulm. The back-loading garages, the smaller lots, the little narrower streets, the front porches, all of those things were the design concepts that were brought forward by the architect that was engaged by the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund. So that was the very reason why the EDA Board at the time only put those covenants on Phase 1 of Milford Heights. We really wanted to adopt a wait-and-see attitude to make sure that this was going to take hold. Now, you can say what you want 10 years later, you know, was it the design concepts that failed, or was it the economy going in the tank that really caused this thing to stall out? I guess that's a question we can debate forever. But the fact of the matter remains is we've got this other land, this other 20 acres out there, that's ready for development, and we're looking at it in the context of today's needs. And the unfortunate thing that's occurred over the last 10 years is that the cost of a new home has gone up quite a bit. And to talk about building new affordable homes today is a measure that is really impossible to undertake in many instances. So as the EDA Board today has to look at it in the context of what is going to be the best use of that land. And I think the proposal that's before us today for rezoning and this plat really best fits the needs of the community as it sits today. I would say this without a doubt, because I am back on the EDA Board again today, that the design concepts with the townhomes and twin homes are exactly what were identified in the housing studies that we were undertaking in both 2012 and 2017. So the information that we've gathered as the EDA is information that we've shared with the current developer and the person that's looking at buying this land. So if we put ourselves back as the EDA owning this land, and we were looking forward to developing it, I would not say without a doubt that we would be looking at the same types of homes. And so I don't think there's anything that's unique with this type of project. We've seen this in New Ulm before. We've got townhomes out in the Cottonwood Edition that have single-family homes. My own home in the Howenstein Edition has condominiums that were, date back to some being built in 1980 and some being built back in 1996. And I can say without a doubt, there's been no negative impact on this medium-density homes being built in and around single-family detached homes. So I think you should give serious consideration to moving forward with this and use the context of the best use for this land as it sits today in 2017. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Chair, I have a question on the email from our city engineer regarding the width of the street. Is there, on the Beanhorn Street being 60 feet, requested that we should be looking at 80 feet. Is there a compromise there? Is there something we, do we have any options?
Mr. President, the original layout for that area showed an 80-foot right-of-way. I don't want anybody confused, there's a difference between a street width and a right-of-way width. The street is already constructed in an 80-foot right-of-way, a Beanhorn. It's got a generous 10-foot boulevard, plenty of room for trees and other amenities. It was shown as kind of a, not a major, but a corridor to the park, and turn tie into the trails along North Highland, and it'll go to the west eventually, we think. So we're trying to think beyond today's development process and what the area will look like in the future. So 80-foot is really what is needed in that area, in my judgment.
Mr. President, a question for senior engineer, Kaler. This is really more or less a scaled-down version of the North Highland roadway, where it's anticipated to be a focal point, you know, where you've got just a wider, a wider street, much more planned aesthetics than regular streets might have. And some people say that North Highland has too many trees, and some people say it doesn't have enough trees. But it's not set up, I don't believe, as just a typical normal street. Center Street is another street in town that we set up to be different than the rest of the streets. So would that, would that be accurate?
I would say so, Mr. President, with the exception that North Highland is 120 feet in width. 80 feet is kind of a, I wouldn't call it a showcase, but it gives you some more opportunities than a 60-foot right-of-way. That segment of Beanhorn that's already constructed would have to be ripped out of there if you, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to be compatible with what the preliminary layout had shown. And we, quite frankly, were assured that that would be the case prior to the sale. So we want to see that as 80-foot right-of-way and with. So we want to see that as 80-foot right-of-way with.
So if the plat's approved, that could be a condition.
That is one of the conditions, yes.
Name and address for the record, Al.
Al Paler, 519 Valley View Drive, Cortland.
Mark Schaefer, 11838 State Highway 68, New Ulm.
One of the things we looked at on the Beanhorn, we had a meeting earlier with the engineers. You know, you're talking about a showcase. We're talking about the mighty buck. We can make, you know, adding that 20 feet to the lots to, towards the high school, open up a 90-foot-plus range, which is easier to get into 300-plus homes. The homes that I'm currently doing on 11th Street or wherever, the 85s to 90s are really tight trying to get, you know, 2,000 to 2,200 square foot homes on them. So we were looking at trying to gain some perspective on some footage on each of the lots to make them, it just makes them more marketable. I mean, it's five feet is, it's a big deal nowadays when they want these, you know, 36-foot triple garages. You know, we talked about that the street is in there. There is a partial block there. You know, obviously, if there was repairs done, we would pay for that. But, you know, hearing the comments, you know, we want to create a great neighborhood. But, you know, somewhere we got to look at who pays for that all, you know. We have an 80-foot right-of-way going on to a 60-foot. So it's not like Highland, where Highland, in my opinion, is the collector road because all the streets feed to it. So we have an 80-foot right-of-way that's going east to west. In the future, it's going to a 60-foot right-of-way, so we're squeezing it down. You know, I'm not the engineer and, you know, we've talked to the city. It's obviously your wishes. But that's where we came about this was, hey, if we could gain 20 feet, that would be fantastic. We're looking at just curb gutter and batuminus. You know, if the city spruces it up or something, that's something we'll have to work with in the future. So that's kind of where it came about.
Okay.
Also going back to the townhouses. When you look at the whole scheme of how many townhouses there are, the way it's replotted, there is a possibility of only 17 of them. There's, so there isn't, we aren't talking about a lot of homes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Romaine again. The, what is the right-of-way in Fender Drive?
And, Mr. President, Fender Drive is 60 feet in width, right-of-way.
Well, Beanhorn comes off of Fender Drive.
It's already platted as initially as 80 feet in width.
So, you know, if you make Beanhorn wider to accommodate more vehicles, it still feeds in the Fender Drive, which is the, sort of the main street through Milford 1.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Tom, I don't understand your point. Don't confuse the width of the street with the width of the right-of-way.
Well, potentially, you know, the width of the road is controlled by the width of the right-of-way.
I disagree. The street in Beanhorn is already constructed for the first 100 feet. So that would continue at that width. The additional 20-foot in right-of-way just gives you an opportunity to have more boulevards, sidewalk, perhaps a trail in the future.
But the streets, as I understand it, as presently constructed in Milford First Edition, are narrower than the regular city streets. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
How, by how much?
I believe the fender is 34 feet. Kind of are normal now, it's about 38. It used to be 40.
So you get cars parked on both sides of Fender Drive. It's difficult to get, you can't get two cars to pass on the street. So you're, this is going to feed all the rest of this development. Now, I have no objection to changing the size of lots to make them more attractive to people. But I, again, would be more interested in living in a single-family residence district and not adjacent to a multi-family residence. And I have a bunch of comments on the zoning. I don't know if they apply to the plat, but I would like to make those comments now. Is that appropriate?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll address the sale issues later. But when we came before the Planning Commission last week, we presented a petition. And the petition's been represented somehow in the media as a petition of 48 people from, actually, they're from Milford First and from Park Drive or Park Lane, pardon me, and Lee Avenue. And there is nothing in the wording in the petition that says anything other than we oppose the rezoning to R2 and R3 and would prefer that the zoning remain at R1, single-family residence district. The, one thing that, there was a notice of an EDA hearing in the paper last, appeared on July 25th. And that had some important information that should have been talked about at the Planning Commission meeting because it got into some other statements there as well. But the, the notice of hearing said that the terms and conditions of the sale were available to be seen at the EDA office. And those terms and conditions were not available until Friday. And there were statements made by, by Mr. Snowbrick at the meeting that seemed to be in conflict with the terms and conditions as presented in the Second Amendment to the purchase agreement. The statement in the terms and conditions says that the developer, Mr. Paler, and I have no reason to doubt his integrity, but once you open the door to R3, the terms and conditions say that the developer can do anything that's permitted in R3. And R3 does include apartments, although we've been told that that won't happen. The developer has a timeline to work under this for a year. If he meets that timeline, and then the covenants, in the terms of the terms and conditions, or he's released from the covenants. And then after one year, the, the developer can transfer the ownership of this proposed EDA purchase. So, you know, once you open the door to R3, and perhaps the land changes hand, perhaps it doesn't. Apartments are permanent use regardless of what we feel or what the EDA says, pretty much after a year. So, you know, the comments that we made earlier stand, they're in your, in your packet. And I would once again ask that the rezoning and the plating not take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Did you want Mr. Snowbrick to talk about the R3?
That's the question I was going to bring up for Mr. Snowbrick. It's not as simple as it sounds, just to turn it over to somebody and boom, we're going to build apartments. Doesn't quite work like that. You've got a lot of hoops to jump through. Land criteria, land use, and I'll let Mr. Snowbrick explain that.
Dave Snowbrick, regarding the issue of land use. And I might note that the purpose of the Planning Commission is to consider land use matters. You know, the sale of the property is not something that is a Planning Commission responsibility. Regarding land use, we're talking about an amendment to the comp plan to a medium-density category. And then we are talking about the zoning of the property to a, from R1 to R2 and to R3. If you break that down, back in 2007, a development plan was done for the entire parcel of property that was owned by the Economic Development Authority. And if you look at the area that is proposed for rezoning to R2, there were a total of seven single-family dwellings designated for that area. If you look at the plat that has been presented by Mr. Paler, you will find room for four twin homes or eight dwelling units. So we're looking at an increase of one dwelling unit in that particular area. As far as the R3 area is concerned, in the 2007 plan, there were a total of 11 single-family units identified for that area. Total number of townhomes proposed by Mr. Paler is 17. So there's an increase of six. So the effect of the rezoning is a change in the density of the property, in the R2-1 unit, in the R3, six units. The other thing that there would be a change would be in the style of structure that is placed on the, on the property. Twin homes is going to be a little bit bigger than a single-family dwelling. Townhomes is going to be a little bit longer. Mr. Paler indicated that the height would be 22 to 24 feet. In our R1 zone, we allow single-family dwellings to go 35 feet. So these would be well within the, our requirements. One other thing that I'd like to note is if you look at your conditions for plat approval, there is a requirement for a development agreement. This is a standard requirement that we have for all of our subdivisions. And in our development agreements in the past, we have stipulated the number of units that can be constructed on a piece of property as well as other development restrictions. And the development agreement would last for the term that's identified in that document, which can be, you know, in some instances, for the life of the property or there can be a certain defined end period. So that is, at least in my opinion, the way that the city would control what takes place on the property is through the development agreement process. Development agreement is negotiated with the developer and it's presented to the city council for your review and approval. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dan. Any questions?
To my understanding then, just for the people that are concerned about it, they have, they have the hoops to jump through. You're not going to, you're not going to see a three-story apartment building built there. The purchase agreement is going to take care of that. We're adding minimal homes to the original 2007 plan. That's the point I wanted to bring across. I mean, you're not going to see a trailer park all of a sudden can go in there if Mr. Paler, the project doesn't work. It takes a conditional use permit to bring a trailer park in. That's going to come in front of the commissions, the city council. I really don't see that happening. I don't. Am I correct with that, Mr. Snowbrick, about?
Right.
All right.
Any other concerns?
The other thing, I guess, I'd like, maybe City Attorney Hipper, just to respond to the comment that Mr. Romaine made on the one-year timeline. Because that is a kind of a complex. And I think the, what I gleaned from that comment isn't exactly what the one-year, the covenants go away. There seems to be, it wasn't clear from what he was saying, the way I understand it. So maybe Mr. Hipper can just explain the requirement of that covenant, number one. And then number two, what happens, what triggers that covenant from, from no longer being needed?
Yeah, there's actually, the statute is fairly unusual and it's pretty restrictive, Mr. President. The, there are a number of conditions that go along with this. The statute requires that there be covenants that indicate that the use of the land is supposed to be consistent with the purposes presented, which in this case would be residential use as proposed with the twin homes or the, the townhomes. And then eventually, the balance of it, my understanding, is supposed to be single-family dwelling units. The developer, in this case S&amp;P, actually requires the consent of the EDA to be able to sell off the properties. And I think the idea in the statute is to prevent a developer from just flipping them so that, you know, we're, the city right now is dealing with Mr. Paler, Mr. Schaefer, S&amp;P, and not some unknown party. So if they were going to be selling it, the assumption is it's going to be sold to a homeowner. As those sales come through, the EDA would be approving them, but they would have the opportunity to review that. The covenants that are incorporated in the current version of the purchase agreement are something that would remain with the land. Those don't expire after a year. That's something that would, would still be applying. So the other thing that is in the statute, and this is some unusual language. It says that within a year of the time this land would be purchased by S&amp;P, they have to either devote the property to the purpose or actually complete the construction or undertake the construction. I don't know that they're going to be selling off all of these properties and them all built and sold within a year. And the question is going to be whether or not they have devoted the property to that. I think, you know, based upon the representations that we have, the way that they will be marketing them, they may or may not be able to establish that. And the law does give the EDA the ability to extend that one-year period, to give them additional time if they need that to market the properties. So those are all the strings that would go along with the sale and with this development. And both Mr. Snowbrick and Mr. Romaine are correct in that the sequence of events that the council is considering these. At this point, we have a plat, preliminary plat, the approval of which has been recommended by the Planning Commission. They have a number of conditions that would accompany their recommendation. If that is approved, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. You still have to have the plat finalized and ultimately the final version signed. You have to have the development agreement entered into. And that is all something that needs to be worked out. But Mr. Romaine is correct. There are other conditions that I'm assuming the developers want to see as part of this, which includes the rezoning, the changes to the comprehensive plan. So it's kind of a package deal that way. But Mr. Grammets, you're right. As far as these covenants, that's kind of how it would work to this particular sale into these properties. So I probably made that as clear as mud, but that's, that is what the statute requires.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Anybody else? Name and address for the record, please.
Paul Guerrero, 612 Fender Drive. I also signed the petition, having just purchased a home there. Spent a few moments on Realtor.com to take a look and see if there was this purported shortage of housing. And just this afternoon, there were 44 houses in the $100,000 to $200,000 range and 30 houses in the $200,000 to $400,000 range. Probably not counting any for sale by owners out there. So over half the houses for sale right now in New Ulm are $100,000 to $400,000. And then the other question is, what happens to Fender Drive then when all the attention goes to this new development? We've got 19 houses on there now with 12 empty lots. So we're getting a lot of weed blowover with the city just basically just mowing the lawn there on the empty lots. Anyway, and again, I just wanted to reiterate that everybody there on Fender Drive did sign a petition. I think saving one who just didn't want to be involved. So again, keeping it R1 is probably what we'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you have any comments on the homes for sale? I'd like to hear your input on that.
Jeff Dietrich, Centurion, Keketra, 800 South Garden. I guess I can't dispute. I haven't, didn't do any research as far as days on market. One thing that I will tell you, though, that when you look on Realtor.com, Zillow, they don't give you a true picture of what's for sale, what's pending, or what has sold. There's many times you'll see something on Realtor.com, lest you may call in on it, that house has been sold. You know, so, but you also got to remember, in the first phase, there's going to be eight single-family homes and townhomes and row houses. We have none of those on the market. You can't compare what's, I mean, there's, I think there's one twin home now on the market, and that's along Highway 14 by Cashwise, because the other one has sold. There's just a shortage of homes that style. And we're seeing more and more people want those homes. So to compare a twin home to, you know, to be built, to a single-family that is on the market now isn't a fair comparison. You're not comparing apples to apples. One other comment, as long as I'm up here, I'm president of the NUDC. One other comment, as long as I'm up here, I'm president of NUDC, New Ulm Economic Development Corporation. And we represent, or we work with, Kraft, 3M, Windings, Align, and all these other manufacturers in town. They have people who are driving from Eden Prairie, Chaska, Mankato, to come here to work. They're staying in a hotel, or bed and breakfast for four days, then they're driving back home to their families. And that's going to get old quick. So, you're losing, you could possibly lose talented people that can't find a home in town. I feel that this is an ideal situation, ideal location, it's got utilities right to it. You can say, yeah, there's land above the poor farm. That land isn't for sale. That's just like when you talk about buildable lots in town. It's been said that there's almost 300 buildable lots in town. However, in my world, those lots aren't for sale. You know, like Mr. Mayor's got a lot next to him. The lot's not for sale. He's using it for another purpose, you know. Or, I mean, right across from my office, there's the same situation. Right next to my mom, there's the same situation. Those lots aren't for sale. I'm looking at lots that are for sale, that a willing buyer comes along and a seller sells it to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I did get an email late today from the New Ulm Medical Center, basically stating the same thing, that they have a real concern about housing for their employees, being one of the larger employers in our community, and not having housing for doctors or nurses or other medical professionals who want to live in New Ulm and don't have housing needs, the houses that they're preferring. And a lot of the meetings that we've been at in the last year, a lot of folks who want to retire and want to move into the twin homes can't because there's not a market there. There's not much, there's no choices for them. And we have a lot of us getting older all the time and wanting to, what do they call that? The Silver Tsunami that's coming. A lot of us don't want a Mulan's and don't want to shovel snow, and maybe do want some more of the townhome style of homes. But, my other comment is with the EDA, we were looking at shaking that whole system up. What we were doing out there was not working, and part of it was economy, part of it was we weren't building affordable homes. We're selling one a year, and we're selling them at a loss, and it wasn't working. We were going to change that up out there to some degree, and this just kind of happened. And I think this is probably where we would have ended up anyway, because, you know, that whole area was supposed to have been built, what, five, six, seven years ago? The whole area was supposed to have been built by now. It wasn't building. It wasn't working in what we were doing. So, I do support that we're moving forward. We don't have, some people have talked about not having, we don't have a housing concern here. We got a housing crisis here. People want to move into our community, and they can't, because they don't have a house style that they want in our community. Some are higher in, some are workforce employment housing. This isn't going to solve all our problems. Some of our research said we need 500 housing units in our community. This is not going to be anywhere close to that. That's going to serve one portion of the need that we have. But if we're going to grow and invest in our industrial park and add more jobs to our community, there's employers that need help now, and they need employers in our, we need employees in our community, and they need a place to live. There's people that want to retire here. So, I do support this and do think that we need to move forward. I know just across the street over in the Diocese Division, we do have single-family homes there, in with patio homes, and it's been just wonderful. It's been a great combination over there. So, unless there's other comments, I'm going to move this, if you want me to.
Go for it.
Okay. I'm going to offer a motion with the conditions of the preliminary plat of Milford Heights Second Edition, located at part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th Street, Fifth North Street, First Edition.
I'm going to second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 3A, Number 3, Consider Resolution Approving, with one condition, application from Tony Golden, on behalf of Winchell Golden Enterprises Incorporated, requesting conditional use permit to locate a storage facility in B2 District at 1414 West Ridge Road.
Council President Schmitz, members of the city council, Mr. Golden has submitted a request for a conditional use permit to convert an existing building into a storage facility. The proposed location is, was last occupied by Hunter's Den. The proposed request requires a conditional use permit in the B2 zoning district. Mr. Golden indicates that the building would be used for a business that he's involved in, which is Napa Auto Parts. He would have office space in the building, as well as an area for storage of product that would be distributed from that location to stores that apparently operates. The city, in the past, has issued eight conditional use permits for storage purposes in the B2 zoning district. And it's been a combination of both where people are building, or an individual is building individual units for rent to other people, but in this case, it would be the, one business would own the entire business or building.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. With that being said, I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving with one condition, the applicant of Tony Golden, on behalf of Winchell Golden Enterprises Incorporated, requesting a conditional use permit to locate a storage facility in a B2 service business district at 1414 West Ridge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
Council Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, Number 4, Consider Resolution Approving the Petition of Brian Grumman's Executive Director of City Economic Development Authority to amend the city's comprehensive plan to allow minimum-density residence land use in place of low-density residential land use at 628 through 644 Wardju Drive, and 636 to 644.
Who came up with these names, anyway?
I don't know. Brian?
We change that while we're out of here.
At 633 to 645 Haberly Avenue. All right. Pat?
All right. Given the fact that many of these types of activities, according to this particular proposed development, take a long time, the EDA was asked to initiate the petition for this action. And as described earlier, Mr. Schnobrick, you know, stating that this would be medium-density, you know, R3, to allow townhomes. And this piece of it, dealing with the comprehensive plan, along with the development agreement, along with the covenants on the property, all tie all the issues together to end up with the result that is being proposed to the EDA and ultimately, the city. So, you've got an explanation, and the recommendation on the proposed comprehensive plan should take into consideration consistent with comprehensive plan and goals, objectives, and policies, address the interests and needs of the entire city, address changed conditions since the last time the comprehensive plan map or text was amended, demonstrates public benefit, availability of municipal services. And ultimately, what you have is the planning commission unanimously had recommended approval at their July 27, 2017 meeting, after a public hearing on the issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
For whatever it's worth, my understanding and the pronunciation of these streets, it's Warrahoo, which is named after the distillery at the bottom of the Hermanite Hill that used to be there, and Haberly.
Haberly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, these names are taken from early settlers and historic figures from the city of New Ulm.
I know our comprehensive plan is on the future of being redeveloped for 2018, but, so we'll be looking at this whole thing again, and this is available on our public website. But, I'm going to offer the resolution and waive the reading approving this change.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Council Fisher?
Yes.
Council Schultz?
Yes.
Council Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, Number 5, Consider a Motion Approving the Petition by Brian Grumman's Executive Director of City New Ulm Economic Development Authority to rezone R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Multiple Family Residential District at the property at 628 to 644. Go ahead, Mayor, or?
Warrahoo.
There we go. And 636 to 644 Haberly Avenue, and 633 to 645 Haberly Avenue. I got that one down.
I'm going to offer the motion.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, go ahead.
Yes, as Mr. Hipper said, these are all sort of nested issues. So, I guess I'm speaking to five and six at this time, but lest anybody think I'm opposed to multiple-family housing. When Deanna and I were first married, we lived for five years in a condominium in Chaska. And I wound up, because I'm kind of a troublemaking, loudmouth sort of guy, anyway, I wound up the president of the condominium owners' association for the five years we lived there. And if you have a worst enemy, you should wish that job on them. So, then, when we left that organization and we moved down to Winona, we lived in a single-family residence in Winona for 20 years. And speaking of weird zoning in Winona, we were across Hamilton Street from Sloppy Joe's Bar and Grill. That was the name of the place. So, they were nice folks, we got along well with them, but it was kind of a different lifestyle. When we moved to New Ulm, we lived in a triplex down on the row house down at 1319 South German Street. And then, our desire, once we both retired, was to get back into a single-family residence in a single-family housing district. Now, one of the things I've heard here is that, you know, people want to move into these multifamily things because they don't want to deal with their yard. Well, I've got news for you. If you live in a condominium, you've still got a yard, but you wind up having to pay for that yard. If you live in the triplex row house that we lived in on German Street, there was, you had a chunk of the yard, you were responsible for the maintenance on that. You had to deal with the lawn mowing and the snow blowing and everything else. So, you're not going to have this sort of not happen for people. Last time I was here, I talked about spot zoning. We're talking about rezoning a couple of acres out of the 20 in the sale to Mr. Peeler. And then, you start looking at that couple of acres and the entire size of the Fifth North Street Edition, First Edition. It's a spot. Somebody made some comments about the covenants not, in Milford First, don't apply much to the way people want to live anymore. And I would agree with you. You know, we had a heck of a time trying to shoehorn the house we wanted onto the lot that we had purchased. One of the things that probably makes a difference is that I would say that the EDA, in building their spec homes, except for the last one, violates their own covenants, and that the covenants require that a finished home have a hard-surfaced driveway. And that's not been done on all the EDA spec home. And again, Milford First is just the houses along Fender Drive, not the, it doesn't encompass the area that's being considered for rezoning and replating and involved in the sale to Mr. Peeler. So, again, I would speak in opposition to these motions. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe in reference to the last comment you made about the driveways, EDA did order at our last meeting, the driveways to be put in.
Okay, but, so that's one house out of four that I know of.
We did a motion.
Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 3A, Number 6, Consider a Motion Approving a Petition by Brian Grumman's Executive Director of City New Ulm Economic Development Authority to rezone from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Single Family Residential District, the property at 607 to 643 Wardju?
Warrahoo.
Avenue.
Warrahoo.
Okay.
I'm going to move to approve the petition.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 3B, Number 1, Consider a variance request from Mary Ann Grunmeyer to reduce her lot size from 3,750 square feet from the required 4,000 square feet to accommodate the sale at approximately 5 feet of property at 810-8 North Street.
This is just an extension of an earlier agenda item you had this morning, or this afternoon here, where we, which was the simple lot division?
Correct.
Now, by approving the simple lot division, you created a lot that was substandard. And this particular action then grants a variance to that property so that it's allowable to be 250 square feet smaller than the required 4,000 square feet. So, this kind of, if you don't do this...
Can't do the other one. We already did the other one.
Do the other one.
So, I'll offer a motion to accept the variance request.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 3B, Number 2, Consider a variance request from Brent and Nicole Johnson to construct a new home and attach garage with a portion of the garage extending approximately seven feet into the required 30-foot yard setback at 2301 Spence Circle.
As you note, the Board of Zoning Adjustment unanimously recommended approval of this request. You can see on the attached maps, given the corner lot and the house layout and the curve of basically what they would like to do as compared to what they would be required to They would have 23 feet to the property line, if allowed the variance, or 30 feet if not.
I'll make the motion to accept the variance request.
Second. We got a motion and a second to accept the variance request. Any more discussion?
One comment I want to make on it, I don't know if you can get the picture up on the screen. Once in a while, the Board of Zoning Adjustment had these come ahead of us. The way our ordinance is written, when you take a cul-de-sac, where the house will actually be on the straight part of the street, these usually came in front of that board for approval because the ordinance not quite covering a square part of a lot in a cul-de-sac. Though, there had been other ones in front of the city council before, which were approved.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. No more discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 3C, from the Safety Commission, recommending that the engineer's study be undertaken on Highland Avenue and Center Street and at Oak Street to determine if multi-way stop controls is warranted.
Mr. President, at their April 13, 2017, meeting, the Safety Commission received a correspondence from a local citizen suggesting that three intersections in the city should be considered for four-way stop control. After reviewing the Minnesota Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices and other issues relating to the suggestion, the Safety Commission recommended that two intersections be considered to determine if warrants exist for multi-way stop control, and those two intersections are both on North Island, one at Center Street, which technically is a Brown County State 8 highway, and also at Oak Street, which is the site of the new ISD 88 high school. So, their recommendation is to move ahead with this and authorize a request for proposals for the traffic study, which is my recommendation. for the traffic study, which is my recommendation as well.
Mr. President, I did receive a couple letters from individuals that wanted, they could not be here tonight, but did want this, their input read into the record, so I could go forward. First one is from Angela Foster, and she's basically said, "I'm unable to attend a city council meeting tonight, but I would like my concerns for the importance of the Safety Commission recommending that an engineering study be undertaken on North Island, at Center Street, and at Oak Street to determine if a multi-stop is warranted." She lists four items. Number one, the amount of traffic along North Island has increased dramatically since the high school opened. Number two, the high school is a shuttle site to all other schools in New Ulm, and we're trying to promote kids to walk and bike to school, and we need to make sure it's safe for them to do that. Number three, the high school will also be the future site of some of the city's sports programs, with the addition of the dome in future years increasing the use of North Island, and even more now outside of the school hours. Number four, the police department set their new speed buggy up on North Island Avenue near Oak Street in April, and number of vehicles along that stretch was 2,366 vehicles. The average speed was 28 miles per hour, which is under the 30 mile per hour speed limit, but you can send them the attached graphic to show the survival rate of pedestrian being hit by, by various speeds. So that was the one letter. The second letter is from Amanda Grubner, Amanda and her husband Nate Grubner. Nate and I are out of town, but we'd like to have our opinion on the traffic engineering study be read into the record at today's meeting. Thank you. City Council, we are writing to voice our support for the traffic engineering study in, for the intersections of Highland and Center and Highland and Oak Street. I, Amanda, am on the Safety Commission, as well as the Safe Routes to School Action Committee, and I hear these intersections frequently mentioned by the public as problem intersections. At Center and Highland, the Center Street divides the city of New Ulm in half, north, south with schools, park, rec center, et cetera, on either side, between Broadway and out-of-town on Highway 13. Paint Street is the only controlled intersection where pedestrians can safely cross. Many people use the intersection of Center and Highland on foot, bike, or car. The amount of speed of vehicle traffic on Center Street can be particularly daunting to those on foot or on bike. It should be a safe place to cross, the Center Street at the top of the hill. Doing an engineering study on this intersection will belt, will help the city and the county determine how to make this happen. At Oak and Highland, we hear the intersection of Oak and Highland and use it frequently. As you know, this is the intersection nearest to the high school. Highland is a major through affair, and we are concerned with the number and the speed of vehicles on the street. This intersection could potentially be dangerous to students and could discourage them from walking or riding their bike to school. We want to be encouraging healthy behaviors in New Ulm, especially in children, so they grow up to be healthy adults. Our children could walk to the high school and take the shuttle bus to the middle school, but we're hesitant to have them cross Highland on their own, who will be equally concerned in a few years when they attend the high school. Recently, on April 14, 2017, the New Ulm Police Department Speed Buggy was placed in the intersection of Oak and Highland. 2,366 vehicles were recorded. Forty-one percent of these vehicles were speeding with a max speed of 47 miles per hour. Please note that these data were recorded from 10:00 AM to midnight on a holiday when school was not in session. It is not, it's reasonable to assume that the volume distribution and speed of traffic would be different on a school day, therefore, we support a more accurate study. These are the changes, excuse me, these are those that may argue controlling intersection is only necessary during school hours and would be unnecessary or an annoyance at other times. However, without a study, we do not know that to be the case. We would like the city council to approve these studies so we have accurate information on these intersections going forward. This area is up in my ward and Counselor Max Ward, with what we just talked about tonight, and the increasing homes that will be developed in our area. It is, it's become a very busy street in the last five years, huge, huge amount of difference. So I do think, and I know some of my constituents have talked to me about this, one individual in particular has probably called all of us at one point or another about this topic, so he will be very happy to hear if we do approve this tonight. And with that, I'm going to offer the motion recommending this engineering study be taken.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion?
How long does, how long does it take for the study to get done? What's the timeline on this?
Mr. President, I haven't prepared the RFP yet. You may note that in the primary issues, we really have to gather useful traffic information, which means the detour on Center Street from the Highway 15 project needs to be removed. The college should be in session, and certainly the high school should be in session. I think we've got the restripped right-turn lane already on Oak Street. I'm not certain if the no parking signs are up, but they'll be up, so those conditions need to happen, so it'll be sometime in September before we'll probably be able to get after this.
Can remind me, we, we always had concerns about Highway 14 in, in North Island. We can't really do a lot there because it's a state road, is that be correct?
The Highway 14 and North Island intersection is controlled by the state highway, and they have, on several occasions, done a minor intersection evaluation study, and they still, to this point, do not see the warrants for a signal or any other type of control at that intersection. I think this will go a long way to kind of support any future action on that.
Didn't they want two years of school traffic before they would take a second look? Is that what I remember? Is that sound right?
Mr. President and Counselor Schultz, I don't recall that particular caveat, but they need to see the intersection traffic pick up at that location.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Steve. More discussion? On favor, oh, go ahead.
Tom Romaine again, and I would speak in support of this, this action. We also have noticed a large increase in traffic on Fender Drive, and people have learned that they can dodge the four-way stop at 5th North Street and Highland, so they come down Fender. And we've had communications with the police department where we've asked them, they've had the speed buggy on Fender a couple times already, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any more discussion? CNN, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries.
Item 4A, number one and number two, consider ordinance enacting Section 7.26 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to regulating special vehicles. Number one, second reading ordinance number 17-014, Fifth Series, and number two, motion to adopt ordinance number 17-014, Fifth Series.
Or the council can move to waive the second reading.
I can offer a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance to 17-014, Fifth Series, and, and move to adopt the ordinance. This is the golf cart and...
Regulating special-use vehicles.
Special-use vehicles, yes, better term, thank you.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Only discussion I'd offer, Mr. President, is those who are interested in the event that the council enacts this ordinance, it is effective 30 days after it's been adopted and published, so please don't be bothering our Finance Director for applications until it's effective, because you won't be able to receive the permit until that time.
Do we have a estimated date when that would be for the public?
Thirty days from today. Thirty days presumably from...
From today. So we'll have permits ready to go and...
Yes.
Yes, we will. So 30 days from pub, publishing it, so it won't be published for a few more days yet, right?
It would probably go in by the end of the week.
End of the week.
Yeah. Forty days, no more than, probably forty days from today.
Plan on warm clothes when you're driving.
It'll be September.
No more discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Delay, Dennis.
Well, Dennis Born, you, you mentioned that it's special-use vehicle, it's actually special-vehicle use.
Let's get it right.
No, it says regulating special vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
Correction.
It's new counselors, can't take them anywhere.
Oh, that's what it says.
Item 5A, consider resolution encouraging the people of the City of New Ulm to attend the grand opening of, of the Minnesota State Capitol.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading on this particular topic.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Just a comment, if you haven't been up there, it's beautiful, they've done a phenomenal job. Just a few years ago, they blocked off sections because things were falling from the roof, and they've really cleaned it up, it's beautiful, they've added restrooms, they've added meeting rooms, they changed the dining, if you were ever in the basement. I encourage our, our New Ulm folks to get up there and take a look at.
So is our mayor going to give a tour?
They are going to have tours on that.
I mean, our mayor.
Oh, the mayor? Will the mayor give us a tour? Maybe, if he's there.
Pardon me?
Okay. Have a motion, off resolution.
I have the resolution.
Okay. No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5B, consider resolution authorizing, oh, sorry, that's right, now we can get, we'll go down to 5D. Consider motion authorizing the New Ulm EDA to sell 20-plus acres of lot, one block, two, 5th North Street, in addition to S&amp;P Development LLC after conducting a hearing as required by the EDA bylaws.
Mr. President, I'd, I'd suggest that the council, if they're going to consider this, they might want to do it by resolution.
Okay.
As opposed to a motion. So if that would be acceptable.
So when we get to that point, resolution.
Yep.
Any more discussion?
This is a hearing.
It's a hearing, go ahead.
We're going to have to get you a chair up here, I think.
It's me again, Tom Romaine. I just, you know, I was looking at the statute that, that Mr. Hipper referred to, and this was sort of generated by the letter, the notice we got from the EDA, and I, I was putting together a timeline, and I just want to walk everybody through it here, because I, I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding the process, but on, on June 21, there was a special meeting called by the Vice President of the EDA, and on June 27, the EDA accepted a purchase agreement with an original closing date of July 15 for the lands in question in 5th North's First Edition. And the statute seems to require a hearing and a posting of the hearing notice before the sale, so my question is, for the July 15 closing, was there a hearing scheduled and a, and a notice of the hearing posted anywhere?
No, there was not.
Okay. Then the, the next thing here, on July 11, Mr. Peeler requested a closing date of, of August 15, an amendment to the purchase agreement that was given by the EDA. Okay. On July 14, the notice to those of us who lived in the Milford Heights First Edition was mailed out, and I, my wife and I sent a letter to Brian on the, Mr. Grumman's, pardon me, on the 19th of July with a bunch of questions, and I guess one of the questions that I have now is that hearing that was required to support the sale with the 8/15 closing, when was that scheduled? When was the date of August 8 settled on?
It's scheduled for August...
I understand the EDA is going to have their hearing on August 8 at 8:00 AM. When was that decided upon?
I don't know the exact date, but it was earlier than the 20, no more than 20 and less than 10 days required in the statute, that the notice gets sent out before the hearing.
Yeah, and I know that the, the hearing notice was written on the 21st, and then it was published in the Journal on the 25th, and like I said earlier, the terms and conditions of the sale were, were not available until the 28th, I believe.
Correct, but...
Okay, so now the city council is considering a resolution to allow the EDA to hold their hearing to do the sale today, and then the EDA will have a hearing to consider the sale on August 8, after having unanimously signed a purchase agreement on June 27. So to me, this sort of looks like the cart's way out ahead of the horse, and I don't, I don't see that as a good way to make decisions about things that impact my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Brian could probably elaborate on it. It's, from what I understand of it, as Brian has explained to me, and like I say, we better let him do it, but anyway, in any property that EDA has ever built up, their residential homes and stuff that we sold, we never went back to the city council for approval. So when it came to sale of the property, and I'm the chairman of EDA, we did not realize that we had to go back to the city council for this approval. So we made decisions at the time that probably shouldn't have been made based on the knowledge we had. After we did this, we were brought up to speed of what needs to be done, so we're taking all the right steps now to make sure that everything falls into the order it does. I'm, I'm going to go on a little bit further, because I never made comments when everybody else did. The recommendation that to build these, or sell this property, I think was the best thing, thing we ever did, and I was the one that asked somebody to make a motion to do it, because we had the, the study that says this is what New Ulm needs. In all the years I've been in New Ulm, and that's many dang years, we've never, ever had a developer like Al Peller come in and say, "I want to develop something, and I want to put the streets in the curb and gutter, let's get this thing moving and get something done." Man, Cato does it, St. Peter does it, everybody does it. Now we get the perfect opportunity to do it, and really go someplace and get ahead, and we always get a little kickback from it, you know, and it kind of bugs me a little bit, but you know, I think we're, I know we're doing the right thing, and we need to give him all the dang support we can, the city council that make this thing go. We've had development areas flop on every end of town, and we got somebody that's really willing to work with us and probably meet the needs of the community and, and meet businesses in the town, your 3Ms, your crafts, your college, and everybody else, and yes, it might have some negatives, but I'll tell you one thing, there's going to be more positives when this is all said and done than you can ever believe. My two cents were.
I agree, well-stated.
I agree with, with everything you said, Charlie. I guess the one thing I want to make sure of is, you know, if we were not doing the process the way we probably should have, we're correcting that.
Right.
That's what I'm hearing.
That's what we're doing.
And that is probably all we can do at this point, is that...
Well, we have to make, yeah, we have to correct.
I guess our city attorney would be able to direct us on if we're doing something else wrong, or, I mean, the way we're correcting it is, is proper?
I can tell you, Mr. President, Counselor Fisher, I was not the city attorney when the first sales were made. This is a very substantial decision for the EDA to be making, and the council for the City of New Ulm, they want to make sure they're doing it right. We are doing it right. If, I mean, this is not closed, the sale has not been finished, the property is still owned by the EDA. If the EDA were to decide at this meeting that they didn't want to go ahead with this, I think they would still have the right to do that, so it has not yet become final. We are complying with the statute, the covenants are now part of the transfer, those covenants do remain in place, they don't go away any year. They've got to commit to the use of the property for residential purposes, as they've described it, so we're going to make sure that all of these measures are taken properly and that we're complying with that in the future, and we're also going to be working, because the bylaws for the EDA are fairly old, they should be changed, we're going to make those consistent with the state laws so that everything should run a lot smoother in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ed?
Hi, John. I'm, I'm going to come up as a member of the EDA, put that hat on for a moment. The only reason I, what I want to just kind of reiterate, just a couple things, we've been in discussion, and I went back on the EDA board in January, and, and the ongoing question and discussions even prior to me getting back on the EDA was, what are we going to do about Milford? And, and so I think that's been one of the areas of primary focus for the EDA over the past few years. I can say without doubt or hesitation at this point, if Mr. Peller and Mr. Schaefer would have stepped forward and agreed to purchase the property, the EDA would be undertaking very similar sorts of steps to move forward with this. The problem that the EDA has is that when it comes to funding for things like infrastructure and putting and extending sewer and water, we're kind of at the mercy of the city, in so much as that the, we need to get on the schedule for having bonds issued, and so we kind of have to move up that ladder of importance with other city sort of needs. So when you say... So when you say that this was a great opportunity for these gentlemen to come forward and look at developing it, I have to wholeheartedly agree with you. I think we would be in the same position, but maybe a couple years or more down the road if this were left in the EDA's hands to further develop. So I agree with you that this is a great opportunity for our community. And what we're doing is speeding up the timetable in which to undertake these, this new construction and in doing so with private funds. And I think that that's a great thing that we need to consider for our community when we can go and cooperate and work with private and public sort of resources to make something like this happen. And I'll put on another hat as the chairman of the HNI. And we've gone extensively into researching what the needs of the community are in terms of housing. And this is just but one facet of a wider array of types of housing that are needed for our community. And what we're seeing right now is the fact that we're coming out of this recession, and housing is start to come back into being predominant in all, in a number of local economies. If you go around the state of Minnesota and southern Minnesota, you're gonna be talking to parties just like they are in New Ulm about what are we doing about housing? And so I think we're being very proactive in our approach here and try to make something happen sooner rather than later. Because if we wait, it's only gonna get more difficult for this to try to get resolved. So I fully support this land sale. It's unfortunate that what happened, happened. My understanding of events is that we may have had a resolution that was offered by the council in the past to sell land that really didn't apply to this set of circumstances. Thankfully, Mr. Hipper caught it, and we're rectifying that now to give everybody the opportunity to have their piece said and what their concerns are. And being a past member of the Planning Commission, I remember more than once when different developments were coming into town, even when Oak Bluffs was being considered, we had folks opposing that as well. And now we're ten, fifteen years out, and I think we couldn't be happier that with the development that's gone in that area. I would envision the same thing in Milford, you know, five, 10 years down the road from now. Thank you very much.
You must have a pretty good hat collection.
I do.
Any more discussion?
Hearing none, I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing and offer a resolution to approve the sale of the EDA-owned landlot one, block two, Fifth North Street addition to S&amp;P Development LLC for residential development.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, close the public hearing and approve the sale, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Over and solution.
Yep.
Okay, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item five E, consider motion authorizing the purchase of tablet computers and agenda management software for city hall council chambers.
Mr. Barron is here this evening to update the city council on a potential option. And we'll let him kick off his presentation here.
Good evening, Nate Barron, IT supervisor. The issue sheet that we put together, one moment here, let me get my notes up. Back in 2010, we made the adjustment from a purely paper-based system to the computers that you see before you right now. That project, I think, was pretty successful. We changed from printing an awful lot of paper to having a digital process. And I think that the laptops have been a very successful thing. We had, we realized a great deal of cost savings just from not printing packets anymore and the delivery costs of those packets. Now, of course, the laptops are seven, almost eight years old at this point. We're beginning to have some issues with them, and their reliability isn't quite what we want it to be. So our recommendation is to replace these, to replace these tablets, or these laptops with tablets. The cost between laptops and tablets is very equivalent right now, these days. Although tablets are just a little bit more cost-wise. However, management of the tablets is much easier than laptops. Laptops, there's just more going on with those being that they're Windows, and we have to do a little more with those. So our recommendation is to replace, work on replacing these laptops with tablets. The other aspect is, the agenda process today is still fairly labor-intensive. We've realized a lot of cost savings with getting rid of the paper. However, there's still a great deal of staff time involved with creating agendas from the collecting of documents and information from the various departments, error correcting it, making it look uniform, and then creating the PDF that you use and distributing that. And then, of course, also there's the in-meeting tasks that the Finance Director undertakes with taking minutes, recording votes. And then afterwards is the additional effort of creating the minutes and getting everything posted out on the website as needed. So there's a lot of labor, a lot of labor involved with that. So it is also our recommendation that we move forward with an agenda software, something that's built for this process. Many cities in the, around us and throughout the state of Minnesota already use a system that streamlines the process. And we've identified three different platforms that would be really great solutions for us. Oh, and I guess I wanted to, Brian also asked that I demonstrate what a tablet might look like. One of the concerns, of course, is that the screens on these laptops, you know, it's a generous screen. The, this would be a similar laptop to what, or a tablet to what we'd be replacing those with. It's a, it's almost a 13-inch screen, this one happens to be an iPad Pro 12.9. As you can see, it's very visible. When you're looking at items on the agenda, you can pinch and zoom.
That's what I need.
And you can, so you can get a really good close look.
I can help that.
You can also take notes on this as well. So when you get the agenda, when it's delivered to you, you can actually log in, take the notes, take, you can highlight sections, you can put notes on there. The other aspect, of course, is that it's searchable and you can scroll through things a lot easier. Another advantage, of course, is that you'll notice that this is a much smaller device than what you have in front of you today. With the improvements, I think, that are scheduled, or that we're hoping to make to the room, there'll be charging ports that are going to be closer to the front of the desks here. And so it really removes a lot of the clutter, you're not tied to a mouse and those sorts of things, so.
Security-wise, how would you handle that?
Well, there isn't a whole lot of security, because generally you're working with things that are public documentation.
No, I mean, as far as, can't walk away with these.
Oh, yeah, actually, we found some really great devices that clamp onto these. And we reuse the cabling that's already there, the same lock and key system to secure these to the desk, yeah. Good question, thank you.
I was the, for you newbies on the council, I was the guinea pig when we went paperless back in 2010. And I think I tried it for two months, if I remember right, and I was the only one working off of this. And it worked well, it was like, ooh, here we go. And so it was a little bit different. I might suggest we try the same thing with the new product, just to have one of us try it first before we unroll it all out. But my question was on the software, 5,400 yearly?
Yes.
So that's a license fee plus an annual fee.
Yes.
Wow.
It does sound expensive. What most of these solutions entail is also a hosting fee. They're not a software that we just install one time on each device. So it's what we would call a cloud-based system. So not only would we benefit from having this available here, it also would be something that would be accessible through our website so residents can also go and see the minutes and agendas, the agenda packets online. So that fee includes that service.
So I would assume right now, somebody's coming down here with a USB and they're putting it, dropping it into each computer, right, and taking them off. If people haven't done that, will this change that system, or will that still have to be done that way?
No, this would be, because it's completely online. Depending on this, yeah, depending on the solution, you know, one, a couple of the solutions have apps, so they load right on here. And one of the solutions is web-based, so it's a website. And you, as a committee member, a council member, or commission member, you would come down and when you arrive before the meeting, you log on to the laptop, or to the tablet. And immediately, whatever notes you've taken on the agenda would appear as well.
How would you put the notes on? We, they stay here, right?
No, the notes are, because it's a cloud-based system, so it's based on your login. And so when you log in, say you log into it at home, you'd actually be able to take notes. And I have an example here, if you'd like to see it. I sort of have to find an item that I took notes on, if I may, I can show you how that looks. I did some highlighting and some notes here. So when you log in, that's what you get.
So you'd log in on your home computer?
Correct.
Okay. These would stay here, when you got here, you would log into your account, and all your notes would be there. This gives us a lot more flexibility. And I guess I would, I would say from going from paper to the laptop, that was a big leap.
It was huge, at that time.
Huge leap. But it didn't require any special software.
Oh.
Okay, here, this actually does. And so, to me, I think we've, we've learned a lot on, you know, how to access stuff on the computers here. And I think it's a jump in with kind of both feet and everybody get on the same. Mankato's had this for.
Long time?
Eight years, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Many cities have had this, this isn't new. But I will point out, if you notice that today's agenda is 236 pages long. And so every two paper packets would have been one ream of paper. And we put out 18 copies 10 years ago, or more.
I remember them thick.
Just for the city council, so that's nine reams of paper, there's 10 in a box. So just imagine, one complete box of paper. Not every city council meeting, but many city council meetings, that's all gone. These things have paid for themselves.
Many times over.
Three times over. And I think we're just saying the new technology will expand, I think it's used even more, easier to use. No mouses hanging around here. Less clutter.
I like the big screen here, though, I have to admit.
And those that needed could actually pick it up and get it closer to your eyes.
When would you be looking at implementing this, in January, or is this something you wanna do now?
Well, as you saw on the action item, there have been savings in 2017 that we would like to take advantage of. You know, obviously, all the devices are working today, we don't have any spares. So if one does decide it's going to stop working.
Well, we have one bad one, I think the mayor's is probably the worst one, right?
Rogers.
Rogers is the one that's taped up, and hopefully it keeps working, so.
Yeah, but that's because it's not an iPhone, it's a Windows, you have trouble with that, don't you? Because you're used to the Macs.
I use Macs, right. As does our IT Director, so.
I'm agnostic for the.
I would think, given the timing, and there are funds in the general fund that before the end of the year, we could have this put together and ready to go.
And as far as timeline for rolling out, because we're waiting for approval, we really don't have a timeline for implementation. Obviously, there's a large number of people that need to be trained in, you know, with all the different committees and councils, you know, commissions and everything. So it's not something we can just say, September, we're gonna just go for it. It'll probably be a similar situation where we have some members of each body who are test cases for this and lead the way. But right now, we don't have a specific timeline.
I certainly support the change I did back nine years ago, and I'll do so again today. So I'm gonna authorize this purchase.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Foes no? Motion carries. Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Item five F, consider motion authorizing request for proposals to deliver the proposed Fifth North Street reconstruction project. Have someone add, Steve?
Mr. President, we have on our three-year capital improvement plan the reconstruction of Fifth North from Garden Street to Highland. Probably all know that roadway's deteriorating and becoming in rather poor condition. We've been programmed to receive a 700, approximately $740,000 federal grant to assist in that. And also, we'll have some state aid monies that can cover the balance of the eligible portions. I would like to move ahead, hopefully you will authorize an RFP for the design requirements of this rather lengthy federal aid process. We'd like to move ahead with that as soon as possible. We'll do in-house field survey and deliver the project inspection during the construction of the project. But I'd like to get some help with the design process and other federal aid requirements.
I'll move this request, it's in my ward, and boy, I hope it lasts until 2019. I'm not sure, might be a gravel road by then.
Second it. We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no? Motion carries. Item six A, consider acceptance of list claims paid and approval of list of claims to be paid. Claims paid in amount of $3,909,259.54 and list of claims to be paid in amount of $881,317.88.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes no? Motion carries, but no more business. Please adjourn.